All my friends. Did get too close to it and I wanted to get something. I did.
That's why I didn't just say, don't switch this one.
Right. That's in the time.
All right, we'll get this meeting called a meeting to order. Welcome everyone to our Williamsport City Council meeting this evening. It's Thursday, March seventeenth. We're here in Train Transit Two, Third Floor. Please rise for the invocation by Councilwoman Monty Katz, followed by the flag salute and the roll call.
With this being Saint Patrick's Day, I thought I would honor my heritage and share some Irish prayers. May peace and plenty bless our world with a joy that long endures, and may all life's passing season bring the best to you and yours. May the road rise up to meet you. May the wind be always at your back. May the sun shine warm upon your face. The rains fall soft upon your fields. Until we meet again, may God hold you in the palm of his hand. May the leprechauns be near you to spread luck along your way, and may all the Irish angels smile upon you on Saint Patrick's Day. May good luck be with you wherever you go, and your blessings outnumber the shamrocks that grow. May your days be many and your troubles be few. May all God's blessings descend upon you. May peace be strong. May you find what you're seeking wherever you roam. Happy Saint Patrick's Day.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is Frank. If you'd call the roll, please.
Mr. Allison.
Here.
Mr. Mackey.
Here.
Mr. Pelizzi.
Here.
Mr. Bider.
Here.
Ms. Mealy, absent. Mrs. Katz.
Here.
Mr. Yoder.
Here. We have a quorum. Before we go into the agenda, I'd like to make a couple of announcements. We've had a couple of executive sessions here recently following our last meeting. In property one, March third, we had one this past Monday on March fourteenth, and we're going to have another one this evening. Following the meeting, each are related to agency business privilege under law, so I needed to announce that. We'll move into item three, approval of city council meeting minutes from March third, two thousand twenty-two. Is there a motion in a second?
So move second.
Any discussion on the minutes for members of council? Hearing seeing none, Mrs. Frank.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelizzi.
Yes.
Mr. Bider.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes, motion passes six to oh, limit or six, no, correct. Limited courtesy of floor. We've had no requests tonight. Item five, public hearing for a liquor license transfer. I will open the public hearing. Is there anybody, Norm, do you want to kick this off?
The purpose of this public hearing is that when a lic- liquor license is transferred from one municipality to another. The receiving municipality has to hold a public hearing, and the grounds for the approval are that the receiving municipality, which would be Williamsport, must grant the approval unless it finds that doing so would have an adverse effect on the welfare, health, peace, and morals of either the municipality or its residents. And this transfer, the entity that's purchasing the license is DeRosco Foods LLC. And it's to purchase a license from an N A license holder in Jersey Shore, and they intend to move the license to one fifty-one East Third Street, Williamsport, PA. In speaking with the attorney for the proposed licensee, unfortunately, he has a meeting before another authority tonight, but he indicated his clients would be here, and I guess they really should speak first.
How are you guys tonight? Good, good evening. How are you?
Good, thank you. My name is John Ruskaskis. My wife Andrea. We're partners in John Ryan Brewery, representing our other two partners who couldn't make it here this evening. We, we currently have a brewery license in which we're able to sell our manufactured beer as well as Pennsylvania-produced spirits and wines, and we just feel like to better serve our community and our clientele that being able to open up to different varieties of wines and, and spirits will be able to provide a better service to our community and our clientele there as well. I don't know. Is there much more that I need to say than that? It's pretty straightforward, I guess. No, no, not at all. I mean, we're already approved to sell. This is just, to us, we see it as more of an, an extension of what we're able to provide to our clientele. So. Good. Any questions, concerns?
Thank you very.
Fantastic. Thank you, guys.
Should be open to anyone who wants to speak for or against.
Yeah, so we'll open the floor to anybody that wishes to speak in favor of this liquor license transfer. Okay, hearing seeing none, we'll open the floor to anyone wishing to speak against the license transfer. Okay, hearing seeing none, we'll close the public hearing for the license transfer.
Do you want to move down to the resolution?
Uh, yeah, we can certainly do that.
A couple of items down.
Yeah, while they're here, we can certainly do that. So let's jump to item sixteen, Mrs. Frank in short form.
Resolution of the city of Williamsport approving the transfer of a P L C B license number R four eight oh one six into the city from Jersey Shore, Lake Coming County.
Is there a motion in a second? So move.
Second.
All right, Mr. Lubin.
Nothing really to add to what's already been said, just that it requires a city council approval in order for the applicants to obtain the liquor license. This will make, you know, will help them out, obviously, and be nice to expand a business in Williamsport.
Absolutely. I couldn't agree more, and you know, I, I haven't partaken in the brewery yet, certainly will at some point, but at least from the outside, it looks very beautiful. It's a great addition to that section of town, and thanks for the investment you're making in the city, for sure. It's great to see, so. Any, this was reviewed in finance. I'll defer to Councilman Allison with Miss Mealy not here right now.
Um, yeah, it was a pretty cut and dried cursory examination, and it hits all the, all the benchmarks, so it's passed it to the full body council with positive recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Allison. Are there any other comments or questions from members of council on this? Okay, hearing seeing none, Mrs. Frank on the motion, please.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelizzi.
Yes.
Mr. Bider.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes, motion passes six oh. Thank you, and thank you for your participation this evening. Very much appreciated. We'll go back up to item six, public hearing, street vacation, corner of Poplar and Webb Street. Mr. Gerardi, you're filling in for Mr. Nar this evening. Let's kick this off, and then we'll open this up.
Okay. Good evening, President Yoder and members of council. What you have before you is a request by Mr. Garrett to vacate a portion of. Let me start over. In accordance with the Pennsylvania Municipal Planning Code, okay, you're required to have a public hearing to the general public to let them know whether they have any interest or not in this particular area. The public knows was provided to both the general public and the neighbors. It was advertised in the Sun Gazette for three separate times, which is required by the ordinance, and we have not received any public comment via email or in person.
All right, thank you, Mr. Gerardi. So I will open up the public hearing. Or is there anybody in attendance this evening that would like to speak in favor of the street vacation? Hearing seeing none, we'll move to, is there anyone that would like to speak against the street vacation? Okay, hearing seen on, we'll close this. Takes care of item six. We'll go right into item seven. Mrs. Frank, if you would, please.
Inordinate and first reading, vacating a portion of Poplar and Webb Street in the fifth floor.
Is there a motion in a second?
So move.
Second.
All right, Mr. Drori.
Yes. Again, Mr. Garrett has requested the city to vacate its entrance in a section of the road on Poplar and Webb Street where they meet. Attached, we gave you a copy of the vacancy area that's going to be vacated. The plans are to vacate the area from West Third Street to the intersection of Webb Street, and then from Webb Street, it would go from Trenton Place to the intersection of Poplar Street. This was reviewed both by our engineer, John Sanders, and Gary Nar. The city has not and does not have any interest to do anything with the road. The ordinance was also reviewed by our solicitor, and he found no problems with the ordinance. Planning Commission reviewed this on March seventh and gave it a positive recommendation. The, the plan is located within the M L zoning district. Also, this was Mr. Garrett's, the one who owns the property on both sides on all around it, so he'd be vacating it both to him. And this also went through Public Works with the, they came through with a positive recommendation to city council, and I can turn it over to Mrs. Katz.
Thank you, Mr. Gerardi. Does it go to Public Works, Mrs. Katz?
Yes, it did. It came to Public Works, and it was passed with a positive recommendation. Gary did, he explained a lot of this, but one of the problems that we have with this area is that people were using that as a pass-through, and also a lot of garbage was dumped in the back there, and it's also becoming very hazardous with doing that. And if everybody's, you know, familiar with that area, it is, you know, it's not the most easiest way and to do anything in that area. So to have, to vacate that street, I think it's going to be beneficial to the houses and everybody that's around there. And I'll defer this to anybody else on Public Works.
Thank you, Mrs. Katz. Any other members of Public Works have anything to add?
That pretty much says it.
Perfect. Any other members of council have any other comments or questions related to this? Okay, hearing seeing none, then. This is Frank on the motion, please.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelizzi.
Yes.
Mr. Bider.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes, motion passes seven oh. Thank you all. Thank you, Mr. Drori.
Thank you.
For Mr. Nar, you're welcome. All right, actually, Joe, if you want to stay up there, we'll move your three up. I think you have a guest here this evening, so we'll move down to item twenty-five, a land development for U P M Street Off Street Parking, six ninety-nine, Row Ave. I'll turn this over to you, Mr. Gerardi. Sorry.
Okay. What you have before you is a land development plan for U P M C. The current land right now is vacant. It's a three-story office complex, I believe, a three-story off, office complex. It's located at six ninety-nine Rural Avenue within the institutional district. The proposed plan is to demo the structure and construct a eighty-five all-street parking area plus thirteen ADA accessible spaces. Council approved the demo back in two thousand twenty of January. The proposal of the plans to create more parking for the hospital facility to create thirteen ADA spaces within close proximity of the emergency room and the hospital entrance. The plan was reviewed by our engineering staff and Gary Nar with, and they found everything has been met according to our land development ordinance. The planning commission, the plan's also reviewed by Lake Coming County Planning Commission, which you have a copy of, and they approved it. They recommended an approval. The last thing is the city planning commission also did review this, and they passed it with a positive recommendation to council. And I'll have any, if you have any questions, so myself, or we do have representative from U P M C.
Thank you, Mr. Drori. Janice, did we get a motion in a second? I think I might have missed that. We did not. Is there a motion in a second? So move.
Second.
Second. All right, thank you. Mrs. Katz.
So I take it this property, if I can ask these questions to you, sir, who your name is? Would you like to come up here, please? Thank you, Mr. Hoffman.
Sure.
Question I have is when this first came up, how many years ago? This was.
Two years, at least.
Two years ago. There was plans in place there for another building to be built. I take it the way this is going and proceeding at this point, that those plans are no longer going to be there.
That initiative, initiative has been tabled.
It's been tabled?
Yes.
Temporary or, the only reason I'm asking because the plans are so exciting that, you know, to see this now turned into a parking lot is kind of, you know, disappointing in a way.
It's temporary at this point.
Okay, that was the question I had.
Sure.
Are there any other questions or comments from other members of council on this? Mrs. Mealy.
No, they didn't take the permit out. It was approved for demolition, and that demolition, once it's approved, it's forever on that particular property. There's no, there's no, I don't want to say time restraints in the ordinance itself.
Oh, okay.
Follow me.
So the permit expires.
They never took the permit out. They just got the approval. Now they will be coming in for a permit for the demolition.
Okay.
Yep. Mr. Lubin could correct me, but I'm, I'm positive that's how it is. Once you reach that demolition through councils because of the ordinance, it stays with that property.
You got it. Got it, yeah. That, I think, all I would, the only other thing I would say is that I would second on it, but obviously. More than just parking around the hospital on that.
Any other comments or questions related to this from other members of council?
Welcome.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hearing and seeing none, Mrs. Frank on the motion, please.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelizzi.
Yes.
Mr. Bider.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes, motion passes seven oh. We'll go to item twenty-six, certificate of appropriateness for three twenty-eight Court Street, Mr. Gerardi.
Yes, this is four sixty-eight Court Street. This is a certificate of appropriateness, appropriateness request. What the owner's requesting is to. This is three twenty-eight Court. I'm sorry. Is that the one we're at? That's.
Yes.
Yes, this is the Oak Corner Building located at three twenty-eight Court Street. The owner requests to replace the existing fence along the property line and replace it with a new block and brick wall. Six foot high will meet the requirements under the zoning ordinance. The brick is to match the old, the existing old corner building that would be on that side of the building. At this time, they do not have an idea of what color they want to paint the other side of it, which will be blocked, because the owner of that property hasn't really decided what he wants to do with that area. He might make it a courtyard, and then he wants to match that color, and they both agreed that they would do that. That would come back through for an approval, the color of the paint. So at this point, we're just approving the brick, and the wall is six foot high. It does meet all the zoning requirements. Gary did take a look at it.
Thank you, Mr. Gerardi.
One thing I will add, I'm sorry, we're also going to be replacing the sidewalks completely around the building, and I did get ahold of Mr. Sanders, and what they'll be doing is they're going to be replacing the intersection corner with an AD accessible curb ramp going across the street to the other side in the curb ramp, because on the opposite side of the street, that's the courtyard, the courthouse, and that also has been ADA accessible. We try to do that with sidewalks.
Open the floor for questions, Mrs. Mealy.
So you're saying this will, this will be walk while with brick facing to that?
That's correct, but the brick facing is only going to be on Oak Corner side.
Yeah. And then this, this, I'm assuming the sidewalk down Willow Street are inaccessible.
No, no, they're not wide enough. Right, so it'll be going across to the other side.
Right, right.
You won't make it down court.
I would ask for motion in a second. I keep forgetting that tonight, apparently, for some reason, so.
So.
Second. Thank you, thank you. All right, are there any other comments or questions from other members of council? All right, hearing and seeing none, Mrs. Frank on the motion, please.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelizzi.
Yes.
Mr. Bider.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy. Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes, motion passes seven oh. Item twenty-seven, certificates of appropriateness for four sixty-eight West Third Street. Is there a motion in a second?
So move.
Second.
Mr. Gerardi.
Yes, this is the last one I have here for tonight. What you have is a certificate appropriateness request for man-made pools. LLC, they are located on this street just further down in the city. They bought the former Shore Auto Parts building. They're going to make that their new business. What he'd like to do is do some painting and some signage. The painting is the, the exterior, the existing metal roof right now is red color, I believe. He wants to paint it black. The main body of the building, of the one-story building will be a dark blue with the bottom forty-eight inches being a dark gray. Then there's a two-story building in the rear of this that's attached. That will be a dark gray. Okay. He's also has garage doors he wants to put up, which will be black. That was added, I believe, the packet late. Janice, did we get that into the packet, which will be black doors. He's also wanting to mount three wall signs and one pole sign or one roof sign, I'm sorry, or pole sign, my fault. I was going to present them later, but he did get them in after I got the agenda to the packet. Now I can hold off, but it'd be easier to do it all right now. I believe we can do that, Mr. Lubin. I have attached a picture of the signs. He's not putting any more signs up than what was originally on that. It does meet the zoning requirements. He's also, the last thing he'd like to do is around the back area of the building, he wants to fence it in. He's going to use a white vinyl fence, six foot high, and it's not because he wants to store a lot of stuff. He's. He's going to use a white vinyl fence, six foot high, and it's not because he wants to store a lot of stuff. He's concerned about in his other business, the trucks were left outside and it's, I guess catalytic converters are newest things to steal off of vehicles. And he's already had several taken, so he'd like to have a secure area to park his vehicles. We told him it couldn't be any kind of chain link with slats because of the area. We prefer something nicer, so he's going to go with a solid, solid vinyl fencing, six foot high. And I think in that drawing, it does show you where the fenced in area is going to be. First drawing back, you'll see on the right-hand side as you're looking at the building and you're standing on Third Street and you're looking at the building, it's on the right-hand side towards the rear where U-Haul is. And again, there's several things he's approving on this. I'd be more than happy to answer any questions. The building is definitely in need of some painting, which I think it'll come out nice. Blue, of course, is the color because the pool, I mean, wishes to stay with the blues and the grays. And if you have any questions, I'm more than happy to try to answer any of those.
Mrs. Katz.
I'm just happy to see something's going in there because it's going to really, really improve that area because it was really starting to look like an eyesore. It really was.
And if you notice, Mr. Millie did have the building torn down on the corner. That's all gone. Mr. Stocker will be coming in for a permit to demo the building across the street. Okay, not the brick one, but the one where the old Fowler Motor Little Building is, so he'll be doing that, too.
Fantastic. Okay.
Ms. Mealy.
I'm not, this is procedural note, the certificate of appropriateness, the number end of the weight of the four sixty eight West Third Street. It seems as though it's actually the four sixty six East Third Street. Right.
Okay.
Not really, because there's no resolution or anything. It's just the motion itself to just say.
Yes. No. Now they'll have to re-stripe. Okay, because if Gary does require those types of things to be done, so they'll have to re-stripe the lot. It'll, of course, have to provide his handicap stalls.
Right.
Yeah.
We won't have to do any sort of landscaping requirement or anything like that.
Was that again? I'm sorry.
He doesn't have to meet any sort of landscaping requirement there.
No, because it is existing structure.
Right. Existing lot, right? If you were to redo the parking lot, you'd have to meet the landscaping requirement.
If he, if he were, no, if he were to dig it up and replace it, yes. If he just goes and does an overlay or a mill, you know, typically they'll do an overlay on it. No, then he wouldn't have to do anything at all. I think his intent is to plant some shrubbery and some trees out front, too.
That would be great. That's the one thing that I can think of that would help the structure in addition.
Correct.
Paint shop and some other stuff. Okay, did you say you have the signs, Joe? Did you, did you email them to us?
Yeah, Gary did. I gave him the Janice that. And I can give you my copies if you'd like to see them if you didn't get them.
I just wouldn't. I, I did not see it's top in my email. Just hold them up quick.
Garage doors.
Yeah, yeah.
That's that sign they have up front. Put that in. Eventually they're going to come back and put a digital sign there.
That's good. Yeah, that's good. That's fine. I just wanted to thank you. You can take them back, Joe. I don't need to have a copy of them. I was just curious because it wasn't part of the
Right, and again, I tried, and then he tried, then he didn't get it there till probably about one o'clock. We must have our information in.
Right, yeah, got it. Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Are there any other questions or comments from members of council on this? Okay, hearing and seeing none, Mrs. Frank on the motion, please.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelizzi.
Yes.
Mr. Bider.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes, motion passes seven oh. All right, we will go.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Gerardi. We'll go back in order here, so we will hit item number eight.
Ordinance amending the forty-second year, twenty sixteen of the community development block grant funds in first reading.
Is there a motion in a second to the discussion?
Second.
Our motion in a second. Mr. Mimi, good evening, sir.
Good evening, President Yoder and members of council. I realize we are only actually taking action initially on item number one. But these six agenda items are connected, so I'm going to try to explain all of it at one time. And then as per norm, we can, you, if you so choose, can vote on them one at, one at a time. So I'll try to be as brief as I can be. Community and Economic Development is bringing six budget amendments to Williamsport City Council. These ordinance serve as house clearing measure to zero out any line items that has gone over the budget amount or had a project closed under the budget amount. The remaining balances from program year twenty sixteen through twenty twenty will be moved forward to program year twenty twenty-one. It's convoluted, just the way HUD is. We are amending closing budget years twenty sixteen and twenty seventeen. Sixty-nine thousand, seven hundred and ninety-seven dollars and seventy-one cents from program year twenty sixteen and thirty-nine thousand, eight hundred and twenty-four dollars and eighty-five cents from program year twenty seventeen will be moved forward to program year twenty twenty. We are amending budget years twenty eighteen through twenty twenty to reflect actual project balances and moving four thousand, five hundred, five hundred and sixty-five dollars and eighty-five cents from program year twenty eighteen and one hundred and nineteen thousand, one hundred and seventy-two dollars and seventy-five cents from program year twenty nineteen to program year twenty twenty. The funding total for FY twenty sixteen through twenty nineteen that will be moving forward to program year twenty twenty is two hundred and thirty-three thousand, three hundred and sixty-one dollars and twenty cents. The amendment for program year twenty twenty reflects the prior year entitlement and the actual entitlement received from HUD. Once we amend the twenty twenty funds, we have a balance of a hundred and two thousand, three hundred and thirty-four dollars and seventy-six cents to add to the prior year balance of two hundred and thirty-three thousand, three hundred and sixty-one dollars and twenty cents. And move the total, which is three hundred and thirty-five thousand, six hundred and ninety-five dollars and ninety-six cents forward into program year twenty twenty-one. The amendment for program year twenty twenty-one reflects the actual allocation from HUD where we received twenty-four thousand, seven hundred and eighty-six dollars more than anticipated with the original budget. The contingency balance and the prior year entitlement make up the three hundred and sixty thousand, four hundred and eighty-one dollars and ninety-six cents line item for program year twenty twenty-one miscellaneous contingents. Based on the twenty twenty-one street reconstruction estimate provided by John Sander, the twenty-one street, street construction project is significantly less than originally budgeted. Where we budgeted four hundred thousand for street reconstruction and eighty thousand for removal of architectural barriers. The number we receive for the project requires a hundred and twenty-seven thousand, two hundred and forty-three dollars of CDBG dollars. We are going to lower the funding of our original budget line item from three nineteen, five eighteen for streets and thirty thousand for architectural barriers. The balance of three hundred and forty-nine thousand, five hundred and eighteen dollars and four cents will be added to the twenty twenty-one miscellaneous contingency balance of three hundred and sixty thousand, four hundred and eighty-one ninety-six to create a fire apparatus project in program year twenty twenty-one. In the amount of seven hundred and ten thousand dollars, seven hundred thousand dollars for the purchase of the fire apparatus, ten thousand dollars for project delivery costs. The project will provide the fire department with the new apparatus. But the part for community and economic development is it'll put us in will eliminate our shortfall in HUD's timeliness requirements. Which will become an issue if it happens in two consecutive years. Upon approval, the second reading of these amendments, we will undergo the necessary substantial amendments in HUD's IDIS program in compliance with HUD's legal guidelines. First of all, I'd like to recognize Joe Reichenbach and my staff. He spent a lot of time going through all the year's budgets and reconciling all of them so that we could bring this to you this evening. At this point, I'm here to answer any questions. This was reviewed in finance and recommended forwarding, forwarded to this body with a positive recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Mimi. This was reviewed in finance. Ms. Mealy, I'll turn it over to you.
This was reviewed in finance on Tuesday afternoon and, and forwarded with a positive recommendation. Mr. Mimi is right. However, in the interim, Mr. Mimi, in discussion with John Sander, he relayed to us that about four hundred and forty thousand dollars of the initial four hundred and eighty thousand dollar allocation for streets in twenty twenty-one has, has been not expended, but promised for the streets program. So there's only forty thousand dollars remaining from
We've, we've corrected the issue going forward with our twenty twenty-two allocations that will be bringing to you in the near future.
But that's not
So we're going to be able to cover all his street project fund through CDBG.
You're planning to take the funding out of twenty twenty-two for the twenty twenty-one street reconstruction project?
Yes, ma'am.
But we don't receive that allocation until October of this year, correct?
We probably will receive it May, June, as soon as we complete our plan that we are working on right now, and we're going to discuss that in a minute. So that'll, that'll take care of the shortfall. There was a mistake or a misunderstanding with emails going back and forth. And so we, we, we came up with a resolution to be able to fund the fire apparatus and to also take care of all the street projects that are out for bid right now.
Understood. What does that mean in terms of our funding for streets in twenty twenty-two? As a rule, you know, it's community development contributes about three hundred thousand dollars annually, anywhere between three and four to our street paving project in the city.
Probably will reduce the availability for any other streets in the LMI district for twenty twenty-two.
Understood. I'll be honest, it, you know, in thinking about this since Tuesday, you know, especially once we discovered the, the the difference between community developments budget and Mr. Sanders' plan budget for the streets in twenty twenty-one, I've been a little concerned at what projects do we still have open from these prior budget years for which we're, we're eliminating contingency funding? That is to say, we're
We're closing twenty sixteen and twenty seventeen completely.
Right.
So there are some redevelopment projects in twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen and twenty twenty. Specific ones I can't answer.
Right.
But we left the funding in place that was allocated to those projects. The money just hasn't been spent yet because either the contractors are
Right.
doing the work or whatever, but we, we have covered all the items that were budgeted in those years. And all we did was remove the funds that weren't allocated to the certain, to, to certain projects.
So maybe I'm misunderstanding the meaning of contingency. I, I was assuming that the contingency funds in those budget years related to the fact that we might need extra funding for projects that were still under, you know, like being worked on in those budget years.
And there is funding left to do what projects still remain that haven't been done.
But I mean, if they were to go over budget, I thought that that was the meaning of the contingency funding in those program years.
Based on what, what we've reviewed and discussed with, with like Carl and, and, and his allocations, there's sufficient funding to complete all his projects.
In the, in the line specifically and no need for the contingency funding.
Yes, ma'am.
Because I, I guess what I'm understanding from a plan laid out by these six amend amendments and, and then from the further planning to, to take the twenty twenty-one street project funding from the twenty twenty-two budget is that we will effectively be eliminating any sort of wiggle room within the community development office until at least next May or June, assuming that we receive a timely allocation from the federal government.
That is correct.
And so if we were to have something that went over budget from a prior year or something like that, we would be needing to find that in the general fund or otherwise funded. Correct? Because there wouldn't, there wouldn't be any funding within community development to, to handle that.
There is no funding in the community development budget for new projects. There's probably enough reserve left to cover any minor contingencies that might, might arise.
Okay. Got it. I mean, I, I guess what I would say is upon looking into the, the financial situation between Tuesday and now, finance did forward, these are the positive recommendation, but personally, I no longer feel comfortable. I, I, I would certainly be willing to close out sixteen and seventeen if we have no further work going on in those, in those budget years, but I'm not certain that I feel comfortable moving on the rest of these ordinances this evening because it seems to me like we need to put some hard thought both into the, the possibility that we're, that we're going to create some sort of financial hardship within the CD, within community development, but also I, I just think that we need to consider long and hard the, the street reconstruction program within twenty twenty-one. I mean, what we're talking about in this case is this funding is going toward fire apparatus. The remaining funding for the fire apparatus is coming from American Rescue Plan Act funds. The one thing that we cannot use American Rescue Plan Act funds to do is pave streets. And so for us to take this funding out of community development that we could use to pave streets and, and utilize it for a fire apparatus might, to me, be short-sighted. And frankly, just having sort of begun to think about that today, I'm not quite sure. But it seems to me that as the chair of the finance committee at this point, I would recommend tabling at least the, the final four agenda items. I think that would be eleven to fifteen. No, excuse me, eleven to fourteen, well, ten, whatever.
Eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one years.
Okay. Yes, exactly. And, and moving on sixteen and seventeen, if that's the, the wish of the remaining members of council. And then we can maybe the, between the administration and, and council, we can have some further discussions in the next two weeks just to see what the wisest course of act. Can you not hear me, Randy? Can, can you not hear me? Do I need to get closer?
I can.
Okay. You must be close enough if I'm making that noise. I, I I, I guess I think I would rather have the discussion with both community development, maybe also with mayor, just to discuss what we think is the wisest use. And I would like to go back and have a look at the twenty twenty-two budget that we passed for community development, which I didn't have an opportunity to do today, but I'm not certain what other items within that budget we're funding, what, what other contingency funds remain in the twenty twenty-two budget. To what extent? I guess I hate to see ourselves, we, we don't, we don't receive community development funding by and large until at least halfway through the year. And so to see ourselves basically not only eliminating wiggle room through the beginning of this year in community development, but eliminating it for close, for another fifteen months, fifteen to eighteen months seems to me to be perhaps unwise. When we have alternatives there that, that might be a wiser use, but I probably missed some of the finer points of the actual discussion in finance. So if other members of the committee would like to chime in, please feel free.
Mr. Allison.
And I, I share some of those same concerns as well as the, the thought of taking the community development funds coming in twenty twenty-two out of the street reconstruction segment.
In twenty twenty two, um, out of the street reconstruction segment. I guess I I look at that as it's going to put us behind on our. Street paving schedule. That we normally keep, and I think we have to calculate. Into the equation that a lot of a good portion of the paving repaving and reconstruction on our streets that's. Taken place over the last several years has been partially funded by the utilities. The gas utility and the water company. Now, the water company is going to be active. But the the gas utility is winding down. They're they're just about done. So I I hate to see us get behind on paving. That's one of those infrastructure things that when when we miss a beat. It it really snowballs and it's hard to catch up and. We had gotten behind for several years until all this. Infrastructure through the utilities came into play, and that gave us. Paving that we couldn't afford to do. So we were able to double our our allocation of of streets that got paved. By putting our money into it along. So we leveraged that and got a lot done. But I hate to see us fall behind again, then, uh, like so many other things we've seen that haven't been maintained. Catching up in this economic climate is particularly almost impossible, actually. So I'd like I'd just like to talk to John Sander and get more detail on. On his outlook on those kinds of things.
Right. Not a problem. This is the first reading, so.
Yeah.
There'll be another reading in two weeks if that moves forward. There were the other element to this thing is the commitment of the seven hundred thousand dollars to the fire apparatus purchase. Does have a clock ticking on it.
Right.
Not only the approval of. City Council, but we have to go through the public participation to do a substantial amendment. To fund those fire apparatus, which takes another thirty days. So we are dealing with. Some timeliness issues to have the funding available for the fire department when they needed to be able to. Write the check to pay for the equipment that they've already ordered.
And I I think there are some workarounds to that that would. Reduce the the time constraint so that we could still.
Sure.
Still stay on schedule with that because we need, I mean, we're going to do that. We need to do it. Fire apparatus, but. You know, in the meantime, we can. Work things out and, you know, things need expedited. Council can always call call a special session.
It isn't the council so much as it is the fact that I've got to advertise for thirty days that the public. For the substantial amendment, that's the time clock that is almost. As critical, if not more critical than when council votes on this.
Right.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Allison. Are there any other comments or questions for members of council? On this item, but any of the related CDBG budget items? Mr. Mackey.
Well, I mean, I do. I do agree with Councilwoman Mealy. I I do feel like this needs to be looked at closer, but then also listening to Mr. Mimi. This is the first reading, so even if we pass it tonight, we still have two weeks to talk about it. So I don't know if if we're if this is a a time issue, and it sounds like it is, it might be better off to pass it tonight and. Have those discussions that we were going to have anyway, whether we table it or pass it. And then if we're still not comfortable with it in two weeks, then we can. Can we can we table it on second reading? Is that?
Yeah.
Yeah, so. That would be that would be my rec. My recommendation, just to kind of appease everyone. So.
And the other comments, we've had a potential suggestion to table. We've had a potential suggestion to hold off tabling if needed two weeks. Mr. Pulizzi.
Honestly, I'm I'd be in support of either way, but I just feel like if we tabled it here and now, we would. Obviously, then feel the pressure of the times constraint that we need to make sure that we speak about this in a timely fashion. And I would just hope that if, one way or the other, if we did vote to pass the first reading now, that we would still. Move forward with treating this as such within a time limit to make sure that it that it gets. The attention that that we feel that it needs. So either way, as long as. You know, we make sure that we look at this quickly and thoroughly. You have my support either way.
Okay. Well, I'll let's do this, then. Is there a motion to table?
Well, okay, so just to be first, I I apologize.
But touche. We're not. We don't want to table this one specifically. Yeah, understood. There are days when I'm really on. Today is not one of those, unfortunately, and I will extend my sincerest apologies to the other six of you, so. At least with item number eight, is there any other just items of discussion related to this one? Hearing seen none. Mrs. Frank on the motion, please.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pulizzi.
Yes.
Mr. Bider.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes, motion passes seven oh. We'll move to item number nine.
An ordinance, an ordinance amending and transfer forty third year twenty seventeen community development block grant funds in first reading.
Is there a motion in second?
So move second.
This was a lot. Well, this was all, Mr. Maybe you've given us a description. Ms. Mealy, I think, has hit it from finances perspective. Is there anything for anybody who would like to add related to this? Hearing seeing none. Mrs. Frank on the motion, please.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pulizzi.
Yes.
Mr. Bider.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes, motion passes seven oh. Ten, eleven, twelve, and thirteen are the ones that we're really in question. Or are we allowed to do all these at once?
The vote individ. If you're going to vote to approve, probably. There should be separate votes.
Okay.
For when when if HUD, you know, audits.
Now, understood. Well, we'll we'll play it safe then. Mrs. Frank, item ten, please.
Ordinance amending forty fourth year twenty eighteen community development block grant funds in first reading.
Is there a motion in a second?
Move it.
Second. All right, we have a motion in a second. Any additional discussion outside of voting or tabling? Okay.
I'll make a motion that we table this.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Any just any further discussion on tabling? Hearing seeing none. Mrs. Frank on the motion to table.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
No.
Mr. Pulizzi.
Yes.
Mr. Bider.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes, motion to table passes six one. Since we did that, I'm going to guess it might follow suit, so. Is there? Yeah, is there a motion in a second to open discussion on items eleven through thirteen?
So second.
Okay, and I'll read those really quick. Ordinance amending forty fifth, forty sixth, and forty seventh year of the community development block grant funds. Any further discussion on those three items?
I would make a motion to table those three items.
All right, is there a second? Second. All right. Any discussion on the motion to table? Hearing seeing none. Mrs. Frank on the motion, please.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
No.
Mr. Pulizzi.
Yes.
Mr. Bider.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes, motion passes six one for items eleven, twelve, and thirteen to table. Thank you all. Uh, we'll continue on item fourteen. Mrs. Frank, short form, please.
Resolution adopted the Williamsport Citizen Public, uh, I'm sorry, Williamsport Citizen Participation Plan.
Is there a motion in a second?
So move second.
All right, Mr. Mimi.
Thank you. We're here to present the required citizen participation plan for HUD. Plan was prepared by CEDOCO to assist us in complacency for public outreach with the CDBG program. Representing the city's point of view is our. Representative Kristen McLaughlin from CEDOCO. I'm going to ask her to come up and give us a brief overview, and then we'll both answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Mimi. This was reviewed in finance.
This was.
Is there anything to add or would you like to let her speak?
I think we should like to speak first.
Sorry.
Good evening, President Yoder and members of council. I appreciate the opportunity to come here and introduce myself to everyone here, and I also appreciate the opportunity to work with. The Community Development Office in the city of Williamsport to help administer the community development block grant funds. This is one of the processes that we're in the middle of is making sure that the city has all of its plans and policies. That it needs for HUD compliance in place. This is the first one that's really of top most importance to us because it dictates how. The citizen participation process will move forward for the annual action plan in twenty twenty two to, you know, get back to some of the earlier discussion. The first public hearing will be held in two weeks on March thirty first, and so this this what this plan does is it outlines the process. It's not anything different than what has been done in the past. It's just certainly it's just in writing. And then it will be filed in a particular place so that we all know where it is in the future. A lot of times these plans get adopted. And then they get filed somewhere and nobody remembers where they are. And so this is sort of an update to to the to the existing, the part of the plan that probably already existed. From a long time ago. These are you typically just done once, and then they are good until they need to be amended. I can certainly answer any more specific questions about the plan itself.
Thank you very much. This was reviewed in finance. I'll prefer to give Mrs. Mealy.
This was reviewed in finance and passed the full body of council with positive recommendation. It pretty much, I think, Mr. Allison actually led the walk through the discussion about the. That to whom we were reaching out in order to encourage public participation in discussions of community development budgeting. It it pretty much just outlines the how how we plan to go after public participation. The the sad fact of it is that generally speaking, if we get input from one or possibly two people in the course of. A public hearing cycle, that's over the course of several public hearings, that that's a lot. I'm sure the part of that is due to the nature of a shrinking community development budget, you know, and and consequently. Our allocation has has shrunk over the years. That means that we have very little discretionary funding, so it. That I'm assuming that the meat of it tends to be less interesting, I think, because there's there's not a lot of. Discussion about, oh, should we fund this or oh, should we fund that? It's we are funding the same things we funded last year with the same amount of money. But nonetheless, I think Randy, if you want to speak a little more to the to the programs that we're reaching out to, feel free, but but. It's a it's a it's a good plan. It will hopefully enable us to garner some public input and 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 so we sent it to you all with a positive recommendation.
Sir Allison, I'll prefer you presenting if you'd like to add.
Um, no, I think there's no. It was an interesting conversation.
Very cool. Other, Mr. Bider, if you can add to finance as well. Listen very well. All right. Any other comments or questions from other members of council on this item? Hearing seeing none. Mrs. Frank on the motion, please.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Bider. Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Pulizzi.
It's all right. Yes.
Mr. Bider.
Yes.
And Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes, motion passes seven oh. Item fifteen, Mrs. Frank.
Resolution rejection of bids for Loes Park.
Is there a motion in a second?
So move second. Mr. Mimi, one last time, sir.
Thank you again, members of council, bring to you tonight the. Bid proposal for the Loes Park Improvement Project. There was one bidder that better be land serve. The bid from Landserve was. Approximately three. Three hundred ninety two thousand dollars. And. Along with the cost for design and from from Larson, which was thirty eight thousand. That would take our project cost to four hundred and thirty five thousand dollars. The funding that was allocated to the project was two hundred and fifty thousand dollars from CDBG. Hundred and forty five thousand from DCNR, which was three hundred ninety five thousand. So we are basically forty thousand dollars over budget. And so we we are recommending that we reject this bid, allow us to go out and rebid the rework the project. Try to see what savings we can find and rebid the project here in the next week or two. Any questions? I'll try to answer.
Thank you, Mr. Mimi. This was reviewed in finance. Ms. Mealy.
This was reviewed in finance. With some brief discussion of the fact that this is one of the things that we would often put community development contingency funding toward is is a bit that goes over. Over what we anticipate. That said, Mr. Mr. Mimi made the excellent point that it's very hard to feel certain that you've gotten a. A price reflective of the market when you only receive one bid, which is, I think, the larger part of the issue with this with the with the current project, so. In rebidding the project, the city plans to reach out. Remind me again, Mr. Mimi, how do we? What was the outreach we did this time simply in?
We we used the process through Penn bid to bid the project out. Within the. Project contract with Larson. They had put in place a different way of going about the bidding process through their website, their contacts, et cetera, et cetera. And so we're going to follow through using Larson to see if that doesn't promote more interest in the project. There were two or three. Interested parties, but they never put a proposal in. The only one was 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 Landserve.
Yes, I think I I do think part of part of the idea of rebidding the project was to slim it down a bit and hopefully bring it in within budget, but. If we succeed in getting more than one bid and Mr. Mr. Mimi, I'm assuming that part of the rebidding process will be also to look at. Perhaps eliminating a need for a subcontractor or something like that that might make it work.
We're we're going to look at any and all opportunities to to get this project completed, to get it in the ground yet. This summer so that it would be available for use come the spring of next year.
Right. That that would be good to see. And one of the other discussions was that, of course, if if the project continues to come in over the budget that we have allocated for, one of the other sources. For at least a small amount of funding might be American Rescue Plan funds. That the improvements to the park are. Needed. It's simply a matter of trying to find a way to make them fit with the money that we have allocated.
All right.
We've ordered a full body of council with positive recommendation.
Thank you, Ms. Mealy. Are there any other comments or questions for other members of finance committee? Other members of council, Mr. Pulizzi.
Thank you. Mr. Mimi, a quick question, sir. So we're going to move forward utilizing the following, the draft rebid schedule. Through Larson Design Group. Hopefully, like you said, we can get a little.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Okay, well, then, when we reject all bids for the Loes Park Improvements Project, does this mean that. Larson Design Group will also be rebidding for this project? Is that my understanding?
We're only we're only asking to rebid or to reject the bid for construction of the project.
Okay, so we we've already accepted Larson Design Group.
Yes, sir.
For the engineering.
Yes.
Okay, that's I was just wanting a little clarity. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
No further questions.
Any other comments or questions from other members of council? Hearing seeing none. Mrs. Frank on the motion, please.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pulizzi.
Yes.
Mr. Bider.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes, motion passes seven oh. Thank you, Mr. Mimi.
Thank you.
Have a good evening, sir. We'll move on to item. We'll move on to item seventeen. Mrs. Frank, if you would, please.
Resolution authorizing the filing of statewide local share assessment grant through the Commonwealth Financing Authority and designating the mayor and city controller as the officials to execute all documents and agreements between the city and CFA.
All right. Is there a motion in a second to open discussion?
So move.
Second.
All right, motion in a second. I believe Teresa is joining us remotely.
I am here.
Good evening, Teresa. How are you?
Good evening. How are you?
Doing well. I'll turn it over to you.
Hey, this is a, the LSA is a new program. It is administered by the CFA. Came out, the regulations came out in January of 2022. We had originally been looking at this program for the splash pad. And then I, I think the timeframe for that wouldn't work for this program. So we are looking at the other improvements for Shaw Place Park. And those include the installation of the pump track, which has a beginner, intermediate, and advanced track, demolition of existing pump house, bathhouse improvements, widening your existing trail, and then installing a new eight-foot walking path, installing a fence around the pump track, some parking lot upgrades for the baseball, or excuse me, basketball courts and your main parking lot, tennis court improvements, installing new street trees, ENS control, and then some drainage improvements. So the total cost is $648,096. There is no match. As I had stated in finance, our goal will be to get this fully funded. If by chance the funding amount comes in at a lower amount, we'll work with DCD to shape the request according to the, the funds that are awarded, so that the city council isn't required to match or put any funds into the, the project if there aren't any available. The application was submitted last Friday. And this resolution is just a formality as part of the application process. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Teresa. I'll pass this over to Ms. Mealy again. This was reviewed in finance.
This was reviewed in finance. And just to make sure, do we have a, do I need to make a motion to amend this resolution to reflect the $648,000 amount, or do we have an updated resolution?
I don't know that we have an updated resolution, so we may need to amend it. Janice, did you receive an updated resolution?
No.
Okay, so we'll have to amend it.
All right. That was the first part of the discussion in finance. The discrepancy between the amount we were, the resolution had and the, and the amount that Teresa had mentioned for the grant. Either way, this represents a, a large expenditure of funds and a significant improvement to Shaw Place Park. The fact that the grant documents had already been filed, of course, makes it a bit of a fait accompli, but I suppose we could always vote against it. That said, the, I think the bulk of the discussion in finance, or at least I know that I personally asked how competitive this grant was, and because it is a new grant, it is quite competitive. The, the reason the documents were filed last week was because, of course, they had to be in by a, a certain cutoff. And the, I think the grant only became available, you know, in, in January. So it was a pretty tight window this year. So good on the administration and good on Delta for, for, for filing this for us in a timely fashion. That said, that's not in any way, doesn't make it in any way a certainty that we will get $648,000 or any amount of funding, you know, that we've requested in this grant. Teresa didn't give a particular likelihood, but she did say that we would be following up with, meeting with our legislators, state legislators, to request their assistance in getting funding through this, for this grant. So it's, it's a complex process and just putting in an application, as in many places in the world, doesn't necessarily get you real far. But it's certainly the start. And finance for this, the full body of council with a positive recommendation. We did request and I believe received further documentation, because as you'll note, the document in our folder consisted of exactly one page. But further documentation related to the grant application. Thanks, Adam.
Are there any other comments or questions from members of council on this item? Mr. Byder.
The only comment that I would have is the, the limit to this grant is a million dollars. I do wish that the administration would have pushed for the full million to partially fund the Splash Pad project that we are going to fund through our, regardless, but it would have been nice to have a little bit of extra help with that. That being said, as Liz Mealy had mentioned, there's going to be some great improvements at that park coming for next year. And I'm sure I'll be there with my kids all the time.
You're here. Mrs. Katz, you got a comment?
Yes. When, okay, the grant application is, was filed on Friday. When do we, would you expect to hear any answers? Is there, you know, a time, the time limit on this?
We, we anticipate that the awards will be made by July of this year.
That's really fast. That's great. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions related to this item?
Can I make a motion to amend the resolution?
Yeah, I was, I was going to say, I think there is an interest to amend the resolution, so I was going to ask if there is a motion for that.
Yeah. Hang on just one second here.
Certainly.
While I bring it up, I would like to amend this resolution in the first paragraph, the dollar amount of $507,296.16, and change that to Teresa.
All right, there's a motion to amend. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion on the amendment, proposed amendment? Mrs. Frank, hearing seen on Mrs. Frank on the motion to amend, please.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelisi.
Yes.
Mr. Byder.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes, motion to amend passes seven oh. Is there any final discussion before we move to vote on the actual resolution itself? Hearing seen none. Mrs. Frank on the original motion, please.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelisi.
Yes.
Mr. Byder.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes, motion, original motion passes seven oh. Thank you, Teresa. Thank you for being here this evening. We very much appreciate it.
You're welcome.
All right, item number eighteen, the resolution tabled awarding Brandon Park Baseball Field Design to Larson Design Group. So I'll, I'll relay this to council. The administration is asking us to leave this table. There was some good response from the bidding process, and they would like some more time to go through what was received. So that was the request of the administration. John Sanders not here tonight, so I wanted to relay that for him. But nonetheless, is there a motion to remove from the table for anybody? Okay, I'll leave that as it is. All right, um, let's go to item twenty. If you would read that, Mrs. Frank. We'll get Chris up here and then we'll have Chief Onst come up for the rest of them.
Okay. Resolution memorandum of understanding between city and county area fire chiefs association.
Is there a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second. All right. Mr. Black, good evening, sir.
Good evening. What you have is you have a memorandum of understanding between City Williamsport and CAFCA, which is the Central Area Firefighters Association. We have in our possession a laptop that has outlived any usefulness that we have for it. And they could utilize it to keep their books, which will allow them to get their books off of our systems altogether. And just need approval and there you go.
Thank you, Mr. Black. This was reviewed in public safety. For you, Mr. Mackey?
Yes, it was. He said it all. We're giving away a computer.
All right. Any other questions or comments on this item from members of council? Hearing seen none. Mrs. Frank on the motion, please. Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelisi.
Yes.
Mr. Byder.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes, motion passes seven oh. Thank you, Mr. Black. We'll go back up to item nineteen. Mrs. Frank, if you would read that, please.
Resolution for Fire Civil Service Rules and Regulations Changes.
Is there a motion in a second to open discussion?
So moved. Second.
All right, motion in a second. Chief Onst, good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mayor Rockhamer. Council President Yoder, members of council, for his resolution amending or changing the rules and regulations of the Fire Civil Service Board. Not of the board, but of the rules and regulations. We have basically four changes. On section three, specifically three point, or three dash one point one, it was add meet the following requirements in the first paragraph there. And then on the first bullet point, it was to minimize, I'm sorry, a minimum of two years of employment from three years. It used to be read three years. Now we're moving it down to two years. Back when Chief Goodbroad was the fire chief, he had moved forward and had the thought that after two years, that gives a, a guy a good understanding as a firefighter to be able to move into the engineer's position. So we're kind of on, on the same mindset as that. His, his program was that as soon as you become, you have the two years, you have the training, and your officer and the administration all agree that, yeah, it would be the wise thing to do. They would get promoted to, they would take the test and then be promoted. Right now, we have a very young department. And we're finding that the, the younger guys, a lot of them are coming in already trained. I mean, they could jump on that truck and respond right away. But they still need that two years to, you know, get accustomed to the WBF. So that's the only change, changes on engineer, fire engineer. And then on fire inspector, what we did was we changed the meeting. It did read meeting all the qualifications as a fire inspector. We changed that to meet the following qualifications. That was the only change there. And then we removed fire, fire investigator certification as one of the requirements for that, that position, and modified the three dash three point two and cleaned that up a little bit. The fire investigator, we gave the firefighters two years to, that would be fire inspector, two years to complete that upon promotion. Under the lieutenant position, we changed the minimum years from timing, for timing grade from five to four years. And removed after the appointment to the position of, the employee will have two years to obtain National Fire Academy Certification and Fire Investigation Essentials, or the New York State Fire Investigator Two Certification. We removed that and everything else got bumped up. The final thing that we added was verbiage addressing provisional appointments. Prior administration, because of the youngness or the, the age of our department, there were provisional appointments made to positions, and there was never any oversight by the civil service board. So what Chief Lucas and I, what we pushed forward was, when we met with the civil service board, was to include this in the civil service rules and regulations. It keeps everything upfront, honest, and across the board. Basically, what, what it says, did everybody get a chance to read that? Okay, so the, the big thing is that they are, the provisional appointments will be for a length not to exceed a year. And if it does exceed a year, or it's foreseen to exceed a year, we would go to the civil service board and ask that they approve it to be extended. So that is it. Any questions?
Thank you, Chief.
For myself or for Mr. Reader?
Mr. Reader, do you have anything to add?
Again, our efforts are trying to get all of these rules and regulations updated to today's standards. Chief Onst mentioned the fact that they have a very young crew right now. So what we did is we dropped the requirement time-wise down a year for them, but we gave them more time to receive the proper certifications that they needed because of the difficulty of getting into some of these classes. You know, there, there's far few between, and it makes it very difficult where guys actually have been overlooked for, for promotions because they, they couldn't get this. So this would give them an opportunity to, to get their proper certifications within a two-year time span. The provisional part is very important. It provides the Civil Service Commission some oversight on what's being done. And it set some time limits on there. And I'd also like to, down the road, do the same with the police department rules and regulations. Again, my mission is to try to get as much consistency as we can across the board between the, the two departments. Previously, years ago, there was a separate civil service commission for fire and one for police. The state pushed it all together, so it kind of made a mess of things. So what we're trying to do is bring things back up to today's standards based on the current staffing situations at both the police and the fire.
Thank you, Mr. Reader.
Any other questions?
And I'll offer my apologies. I don't know why, but I didn't even think about you being here to support this item. So thank you for sitting through this so far this evening. This was reviewed in public safety. I'll defer to you, Mr. Mackey.
Yeah, it was. It was passed on with a positive recommendation. I think a lot of our discussion revolved around how young our department really is, which I think is a, it's a good thing. I mean, we've got a lot of young, aggressive, willing firefighters. So, and, and, you know, to Mr. Reader's point, a lot of these trainings are hard to get into. So extending that time, I think, is important as well. But I, I'll open it up to anybody else on the public safety, if there's anything else to add.
Thank you, Mr. Mackey. Any other thing else from other members of public safety? Mrs. Katz?
Chief, just go over what you have here. I, I wrote down notes and I can't read my handwriting like before, when I was doing the invocation. You have here seven or eight engineers at this point?
We have.
I know, I think.
You mean provisional?
Yes, provisional, right.
Yeah, we have, I believe, six provisional engineers and two provisional lieutenants.
Okay.
Right now.
Okay. And as you said, it's, it's really a young, young force, you know? And I think they're still doing an incredible job. And for Jeff, I would like to thank you very much. You've been doing this a long time.
Over ten years.
I know. It's been a long time, and I think we really appreciate it. And we did talk about the board. There are three sitting people right now, and you said you will fill the other two positions probably in the next few months, right? Okay. Thank you.
I would second that. Thank you, Mr. Reader, very much. Other comments or questions from other members of council? Ms. Mealy?
This is not a comment at all on the very good work you did on this document, but maybe a request just across the board. It, that a, a red line document is useful when you're making amendments to, to kind of track, you know, track your changes so that then when we, when we see them, we can tell what's been removed and what's been added. Many of us, especially with documents that haven't been updated for quite a while, aren't real familiar with the original verbiage. So we don't know what we've lost or what's been changed in the, you know what I mean? But, but, I mean, that, that being said, it's, 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 it's good work, and I think high time that, that we've, that we've done these amendments. But if, if and when we get to the police one, maybe we could try to red light it, so it would be a little easier to tell what changed. Thank you.
Agreed. Thank you, Ms. Mealy. Any other comments or questions? Hearing seen on, seeing none. Mrs. Frank on the motion, please.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelisi.
Yes.
Mr. Byder.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Yoder. Mr. Yoder.
Yes, motion passes seven oh. We'll move to item twenty one. Mrs. Frank.
Resolution authorizing agreement between the Reinsberg Bureau of Fire and Whitmer Public Safety Group Incorporated.
Is there a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second. All right, Chief Honst.
Before he's a resolution. With, as Ms. Frank said, with Whitmer Public Safety. We looked into them. They were the co-stars dealer that dealt with the turnout gear that, and some of the other various equipment that goes with our turnout gear. Which would include the boots, the turnout gear, which is the coat, the pants themselves, and the bailout kits. The bailout kits were actually, I didn't have them on the original document that I had sent to the, sent to you guys. When I came up with the, what was one ninety-six, I think it was something, but we, we had monkeyed around with some of the equipment. With Chief Herning, these are turnout gear. Chief, and we were able to remove some of the stuff or lessen the number that we would need. So like myself. Chances are I won't need a face piece. So we were able to, you know, remove a face piece here, some boots there, that kind of thing. So. But that's, that's where we stand on this. If, if you want, I can go over all of these resolutions and then, because they're all related to the turnout gear.
Yeah, certainly fine.
Okay. And the, the second one would be with. MES, which is municipal emergency services. And that is for the purchase of the turnout gear gloves, the firefighting gloves. That amounts to three thousand eight hundred and twenty-five dollars. They are, we, we did receive a demonstrator model of them and the guys seem to, the, the dexterity that you have with them. When you, when your hands are wet and you pull your hands out of your gloves, a lot of times the gloves that we have now, the liners pull out and it's a pain in the keister to get them back in there. So these gloves eliminate that. So. The next one is for Susquehanna fire equipment and that are for particulate hoods and leather fire helmets. Not to exceed three, three thousand four hundred dollars and twenty-six thousand seven hundred and seventy-five dollars respectively. The particular hoods that may sound a lot for, for the hoods, but the hoods are, there's, there's a real big push right now for cancer. Clean, what are they called? Clean cab. Idea where you try to keep the carcinogens and stuff away from you as much as possible. Few years ago, we stopped allowing the guys in turnout gear to come into the living side of the firehouse. That was one step towards that. Another step was purchasing these particulate hoods. There's a liner inside that, that prevents the carcinogens from getting in and making contact with the skin. So that's why they are, they're very expensive now. The next one is with DeVall Safety and they are for the face pieces that we utilize with our turnout gear. So and we bumped them from, we originally wanted to purchase forty-five and the reason for that was. We have, like I said, two sets of gear. A lot of guys don't have a backup face piece so that when they come in off duty, they end up using another face piece. That's stored on the truck. It's an order version and. So that's. This is like, again, this is for thirty face pieces. So. And that's it. Does anyone have any questions for myself or Chief Herning?
Thank you, Chief Honst. I'll defer to Councilman Mackey. These all, all were reviewed in public safety, but I'm twenty-one specifically.
Yeah, I mean, I'll just, I'll speak to all, well, three out of the four were technically reviewed because the, the fourth one wasn't officially on the agenda yet. So that was more of a discussion item, but I'll, I'll speak to all four of these kind of as a group. And again, please keep in mind that the, that this fourth one wasn't discussed. I think ultimately, these were passed on with no recommendation and it's not because we don't think that. We should be purchasing these. This is clearly defined in the ARPA ordinance that we passed. Most of our discussion revolved around whether or not these resolutions should have even been brought to city council in the first place. I think there are maybe some confusion as to. A comment or an idea that no future ARPA spending resolution should be brought to city council until we have compliance in place. And I think that's where most of our could disagreement stem from. So. I mean, that, that, that's pretty much it. If, if not for that caveat, these would have been forwarded with positive recommendation, obviously. So, but I, I'll, I'll let Bonnie or Vince chime in here if they'd like.
Mr. Pelisi.
Yeah, if I may, thank you. No, just to, to Mayor Councilman Mackey's viewpoint, yes, we definitely do. Think that these are, are definitely needed for our, for our fire department, make sure that they, they stay safe and protected. What it was was miscommunication, like he had said, as far as just, we want to ensure that we are spending everything appropriately and in line with how we're able to. And until we had that understanding, you know, I, we had mentioned, I believe in the last council meeting, that we were going to hold off on bringing any resolution, resolutions forward. For the relinquishment of ARPA funds for any expenditures. I think there was a little bit of a miscommunication there that since these were already designated for specifically for PPE that they were already. Understood to be an approved expenditure. And that's where the miscommunication came from. But in no way, shape or form do we not think that, that these are unnecessary because they very much are.
Yeah, certainly. I appreciate that. Um, no, I mean, that, that's a. So we, we, we did, I, I asked that specifically two, two weeks ago, yes. And the intent of the ask, what I did mean was, look, I know we approved all of the, all of these items, but. Before we go through the process of spending any of this money, even things that we did approve, it would be great to have compliance. Under contract and figured out before we continue going through that. So. I think what you're speaking to, that intent was, is what I, I was getting to a hundred percent. And I think in the spirit of. I think in the spirit of what you're discussing is, is in line with that as well. So certainly.
I appreciate you putting my possibly confusing statement so eloquently in. No, you did, you did all right. Okay. Are there any other comment, Mrs. Katz?
Yes, as we, as we discussed, we know how vitally important it is. And by the way, it's nice to see a face to the voice we heard during the Zoom meeting. You know, when we went through all of this, even two weeks ago, we understand where this is coming from. But I think we were waiting for the mayor to come forward to us with compliance and he isn't present here tonight. So we don't know how far he is going with this at this point. And I think that's, as you know, that's how I voiced my opinion. I don't want to be put in a position where we're spending this money and. Where the records are going. It's not the front end so much that I worry about. It's the back end of how this is going to be recorded and, and kept records and everything else. And I want to know where that compliance person's going to be. And we were promised that he was going to get. Somebody, you know, he was going to do an RFP and that we would have this. And he said probably, you know, within either today or in the next two weeks. So I would like to, you know, I would like to really wait and have the mayor present to, you know, to discuss this with him, where we stand with all the compliance issues at this point. I know, I, you know, you said that there's, you know, everything that's coming to us has a time limit and I understand that. Be it community development, be it the fire department, be it the police department, there's always time limits. But we can't be pushed into something unless we know we're doing it correctly. And because the, the ARPA funds are so new to everybody. And what's stated, we're all trying to digest everything continuously. And we just want to make sure it's done correctly, that we don't want it to come back and bite us in the end. And that's the only reason I would like to see this table. Only, only for that reason, I want to see somebody who's in the know and knows where this is going. Because there is nobody here in city hall that can actually, you know, guide us in this process. And that's, that's what we keep on saying. We want the, a correct process. We're finding out when the process hasn't been done, what it has done to us in the city. So that's where I'm coming from.
Right.
Okay.
And just so you know, I, I threw email and on the phone, I spoke with Teresa. From Delta Development and she, she agreed that, you know, it probably would be best. To look at taking it out of the, what was it? The revenue loss category. And that's, that's because it's, Teresa, are you there?
I am here. And as I, yeah, sure. As I explained this afternoon, the final rule from the US Treasury. Had provided a, a sum of ten million for lost revenue without requiring municipalities and cities and counties. To perform a revenue loss calculation. There's an automatic ten million dollars for lost revenue and. Eligible expenses under that account is anything that is provided for general government services. So the fire equipment would be considered general government services. And actually, you know, when you were speaking earlier about road reconstruction, that also is a general government service. So that all can be paid for under a line item that would be entitled lost revenue. And then you would have an infrastructure line item and. Other like PPE and, and some economic development line items as well. But this would fall under the category of lost revenue, general government services. So it, go ahead.
Could I ask you a question?
Sure.
So could you clarify something for me? You said that this could be paid for from lost revenue. Can it also be paid for directly from ARPA funds under a public safety category? The reason I asked that, we had some discussions surrounding that two weeks ago and we were of the impression that. How we had allocated this in our budget as a singular line item within the public safety category was indeed compliant and okay.
Yes. And, and, and let me clarify, President Yoder. Under the ten million dollar category of lost revenue. You would have, you could have subcategories under that ten million dollar line item for public safety, public works. And other categories that you typically would have within your budget. So whatever you have within your general fund budget, general services could be paid for under that umbrella. Of the lost revenue. And you would be, you would be in compliance with the ARPA.
Okay, so let me, let me put it this way. So we have a separate umbrella currently budgeted that is completely separate from lost revenue that we're proposing to fund this. Directly from is having a separate umbrella of public safety that is not a sub umbrella of lost revenue compliant.
I would, unless that were for expenses that are directly related to COVID. So if you were purchasing protective equipment that protects your emergency responders from the impacts of COVID. Then yes, that, that could be under the category of mitigating the negative impacts of COVID. What I would suggest you do is under that ten million dollar umbrella. That's where you would pay for expenses related to this type of equipment.
Thank you, Teresa. Ms. Mealy.
You're welcome.
I, I think the issue of some concern here, Teresa, is that we have a total of twenty-five point eight million dollars to spend. And can only spend ten of it as lost revenue. And so what we are trying to figure out is which expenditures, for instance, fire equipment. You know, PPE for, for our firefighters as well as potentially fire department vehicles can be considered a public safety expenditure because. Obviously, with more than double that ten million dollar base. Number to spend, we can't put everything under lost revenue.
Exactly, exactly. But you have some of your, you know, your recreation improvements, those wouldn't be under lost revenue. Those would be improvements in the impact of the negative impact of COVID because we know that. People need to be outdoors and they have to have outdoor recreation. It's also improving the neighborhoods, which is addressing the negative impact of COVID. So I think you could take some of those others that you, you're maybe thinking need to be under the lost revenue. Probably can go into another category. Any of your infrastructure goes into its own separate category. Your improvements to the levee would be under infrastructure and flood control. Your recreation would be under addressing the negative impacts of COVID. And your economic development initiatives, anything that you're doing with economic development, removal blight, those are under a separate category as well.
I, I think the issue that we're looking at is that between, it's currently between the police department and the fire department, we've allocated. So copy if I'm wrong, something like five to six million dollars just for public safety expenditures. Right. And with only ten million dollars in lost revenue in total and a hope to put. A bare minimum of a million per year into the baseline general fund budget that those numbers just don't add up. So we, you know, we'll have to take a long, hard look at exactly what we're spending where if. If all of these public safety expenditures, the body cameras, the, the radios, the P, the fire PPE, the fire equipment. Need to be considered lost revenue to be a valid expenditure.
Now that if, if it's true PPE. You know, as far as protecting from COVID, then that would go in as that's first category of addressing the negative impacts of COVID. Because you're protecting those emergency responders. If one gets sick and starts to spread, then, then, you know, it's, it's, it's like some of our business and industry where you don't have the labor. In order to provide the service. So not only impacts them, but it impacts your community because they're not going to be able to respond to emergencies within the city.
I think we could clearly make the case that anything that would protect a man from, or a woman from fire would also protect her from COVID. So we, we might, we might be there in terms of this equipment. But I do think the whole conversation that was underlying, underlining the need for someone specifically handling the city's compliance and signing off on these items before we move forward with expenditures. And given that my understanding is that we should have that documentation within the next two weeks. I, I think it wouldn't. Be deferring things too much to, it might be wise as for us just to wait for another two weeks. My, my fear, of course, is that if we're. If we're outlining this as an expenditure, that, that the verbiage within the resolution, et cetera, et cetera, needs to support. The, the, the area of ARPA funding that we're hoping to take this from. So it's good, if it can be considered PPE, then we need to call it PPE. If it needs to be something else, you could enter another category that we need to call it that.
Traditionally, that's what we call it. I mean, any, anything, you know, our SCBA, our AERPA, or, yeah, our turnout gear is all considered PPE. It's, it's always referenced as PPE. So.
I, I think that makes the most sense too, but just for the conversation with, with Teresa, is that the wisest thing to classify it or should we consider it something else? Yeah. Thank you, Teresa, for your input. It's exceptionally valuable.
You're welcome.
Mr. Allison and Mr. Pelisi and John, did you have any, and then Mr. Mackey?
To the first point, I spoke to the mayor.
To the first point, I spoke to the mayor today and he assured me that next council meeting will have something to vote on for compliance. And I have a question. Uh, once these are ordered, what's the timeline?
Depending on what, like the the hoods and the gloves, we should be able to receive them, they usually stock an item like that. The pants coats, you're looking at close to eight months.
Eight months.
For delivery, the helmets possibly a year because of the demand that nationwide is going on. Face pieces, I believe. They had marble in stock, but some in stock.
So, yeah, two weeks or so, I I don't have a problem with. But for some of these things, I I think they're critical for our public safety employees to across the board have. So for us, it's a conversation for them, it's physical harm and life and those kinds of things.
Mr. Pulizzi, thank you, Mr. Allison.
Thank you. Now, and in speaking to that point and equipment chief Hurney's point and earlier Councilwoman Katz's point. The issue date for these quotations was March eleventh, and they do have an expiration date of April tenth. So that still does give us ample time to have the much needed discussion for the clarity on these expenditures. And still be within the timetable before these offers expire, like I said.
We're going to have a, there'll be a significant price increase nationwide for PPE itself is going up roughly fifteen percent. By April fifteenth, I believe is what the date was that he told me. So if we don't act now, there's going to be a a very large increase.
Thank you, Mr. Pulizzi, Mr. Mackey. Teresa, this is Councilman Maggie. It's unfortunate the mayor is not here. I I also spoke to the mayor. And he he once again assured me, I believe after speaking to you and with Delta again, that the way we have this designed under the ordinance as it stands, paying for this out of the public safety umbrella. That this is an eligible expense and this is now, I feel like the first time we're hearing that it potentially could not be, I could you just I I feel like we need some clarification here because I thought this was all ironed out. I I mean, we've we've been assured, I feel like on two or three separate occasions, that this was an eligible expense, the way we have it hammered out as it stands, and that would be our ARPA budget that we passed. We have a a public safety section and and a specific line item under that is PPE to the tune of two hundred thousand dollars. And and even to, and again, I I don't want to put, I mean, the mayor again assured me that this was an eligible expense the way it stands currently. Clarify.
Yes, and if you classify those as PPE and protecting against the negative impacts of COVID. They are eligible under a category outside of the ten million dollars in lost revenue. So in your resolution, um, classifying those as protective equipment would be eligible under a category, the first category, you know, there's four categories under the under the ARPA of responding to the negative impacts of COVID. Well, and that includes your public safety.
Okay, again. And correct me if I I feel like this is the first time I'm hearing this. Explaining it the way you're explaining it currently and I and I, I don't want to throw another log onto this fire. But if 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 what you're saying is true, how do we justify protecting against the negative impacts of COVID to the tune of two and two point three million dollars for buying fire trucks? Which we which we currently have allocated under the public safety umbrella. And that 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 would be a question for you, Teresa.
Okay. And and let me look at the final rule and send you guys an email tomorrow if that's okay. Because it is, public safety is a category within, it was it's a category within the CARES Act and it's a category within the final rule and within the ARPA funds.
Okay, I I mean, I yeah, well, I I don't think we have.
But I think for your for your discussion this evening as it relates to the protective equipment. I don't think there's a gray area there. If it's protective equipment, it can be funded under that category of the impact of COVID.
I think the gray area is simply that fire protective equipment. While yes, protective is not protecting people like a face mask would or something like that from COVID. I think that's where we all have confusion. And I think that's where we're trying to seek clarification right now. I understand what you're saying, but I also think that this is a much broader issue that we're not going to get resolved this evening, so I appreciate your input on that. Please. Turnout gear, the the coats, the pants, the gloves, they all have what's called a vapor barrier. And that's for bloodborne pathogens, a- any any sort of vapors that would could come in contact with your skin. So, yeah, turnout gear would be would be considered PPE, and that, again, that's why we do call it PPE. And I I'm not disagreeing with that statement, but I think that there's, that's a very gray area for us to be considering spending a few hundred thousand dollars on that we absolutely have to have the clarification on right now. So that's really, I think, the point that everybody's trying to make and get across, but once again, we are not going to come to that conclusion this evening, so. I I I appreciate everybody's inputs, specifically yours, Teresa, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I do have a question about the gear itself. We're purchasing thirty five sets, it looks like. What is the useful lifespan of, obviously gloves are going to last a little bit less than, say, helmet would, a face mask would and so on, so do we have a plan in place so we're not going to turn around here and spend an additional two hundred thousand dollars every three or five years or so on?
Yeah, actually, yes. So NFPA, which is the governing body for the Fire Protection Agency, recommends ten year shelf life on turnout gear. Now, that ten year is a baseline. So if I have a guy that doesn't come into a lot of the off duty fires, doesn't get a lot of exposure, I can make that gear probably last fifteen years. Currently, the way I have it set up now is we have two sets of gear per guy, one is their frontline, one is their backup. The backup gear is a maximum of ten years old and it has to be retired. In order to test that, I would have to send that gear out, it would cost a lot of money to see if it would actually withstand the elements that were were in. Frontline is ten years. And then we'll take that ten year and move it to their backup, so they'll get an additional five years when we go to purchase. I'd come up with a plan that the first year, a guy tired for his first year is going to get a full ensemble. At his five year mark, he'll get another one, so that gives me that buffer that I don't have to purchase another set of gear for this firefighter for five years. And then at their ten year mark, they'll get another one, which should take them into their twenty year, when typically a guy will go into the retirement. And that, like at the five year, it would be just a pant and coat, won't be a helmet and all that stuff, because helmets will last a little longer. Uh, the the helmets that we're getting are pretty well constructed. And as long as they're not getting beat up, per se, in a fire, extreme temperatures, I think they'll, they'll they'll typically last a little longer.
Is there any maintenance, especially with the helmets and the face masks, is there maintenance has to be done?
Yeah, we have, I have, I do a yearly inspection on all turnout gear. Actually, I'll be ramping that up here real soon. That we routinely inspect it to look for any wear, tear, or anything like that. Gear that gets torn, ripped, things like that, this card we send out to get repaired. We have, the Barn Fabric Center does our repairs right now. The lady that does that probably will be retiring soon, so now I'm going to have to send that out to more of a professional facility, get it repaired and we're, you know, it's two hundred dollars one set just to get sent out, just for them to look at it. To get repaired. As for the face pieces, we do maintenance on those too. We have two guys, I believe, that are certified to do maintenance on those, they replace straps and things that get wore out. So we we do keep an upkeep on all of our gear.
Okay, we've had a lot of discussion about this specifically, more so on the compliance end. Before any further discussion on compliance, is there any other questions related to this item specifically? So Bonnie, I know you had expressed your interest in tabling. I I don't know where others sit, but I would, if if you have that interest, I I would take a motion. Is there a second?
Or a second?
All right, we have a motion in a second. Is there any additional discussion on this, Mr. Pulizzi?
I just had one question, Norm, we're making a a motion to table items twenty one, twenty two, twenty three, twenty four?
No, we're just doing items to twenty one. If we want to table this, we can do what we did with the other ordinances and table them all together. These, all four of these go together. If if that's the consensus of council based on this, then we can do the other three. Okay, following procedurally at least, so. Are there any other questions related to the motion to table? Hearing, seeing none, Mrs. Frank on the motion to table, please.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Mr. Mackey?
Yes.
Mr. Pulizzi?
Yes.
Mr. Bider?
Yes.
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Yoder?
Yes, motion to table passes seven oh. We'll look at items twenty two, twenty three and twenty four as a group resolutions between MES, Suspana Fire and Diable Safety. Is there a motion and a second to open discussion on all three of those? All right, is there any further discussion on the items themselves?
Mr. President, I would make a motion to table these three items pending further information.
Is there a second, second? Um, any discussion on the motions to table? Hearing, seeing none, Mrs. Frank on the motion to table items twenty two through twenty four.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Mr. Mackey?
Yes.
Mr. Pulizzi?
Yes.
Mr. Bider?
Yes.
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Yoder?
Yes, motion to table, pat, all three of those passes seven oh. Um, I think we captured everything, we jumped around a lot. Mrs. Frank, did we miss anything from your your notes?
Nothing, just except for filing.
Okay, perfect, that's where I'm at too. Item twenty eight, except for filing, we have the Finance Committee meeting minutes from February first. Controllers report from November two thousand twenty one, Transit Oversight Committee meeting from March first, two thousand twenty two. Water and Sewer Authority minutes, February ninth, two thousand twenty two. Veterans Morale Park Commission meeting minutes from February seventh, two thousand twenty two. And the Bureau of Codes report from January twenty two. Is there a motion in a second to, except for filing?
So move it.
Motion in a second, is there any discussion on any of the items we're filing? Hearing, seeing none, Mrs. Frank on the motion, please. Yes.
Mr. Mackey?
Yes.
Mr. Pulizzi?
Yes.
Mr. Bider?
Yes.
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Yoder?
Yes, motion passes seven oh. Item twenty nine, announcements, the next regularly scheduled city council meeting will be held on Thursday, March thirty first, two thousand twenty two, at seven PM here in Train Transit Two. Upcoming meetings, Friday, March eighteenth, one PM is ERC. Wednesday, March twenty third, eleven thirty AM is the Redevelopment Authority. March twenty ninth, Tuesday, eleven thirty, and Public Safety, one PM Finance, two thirty PM Public Works. And in two weeks, Thursday, March thirty first, our next regularly scheduled council meeting at seven PM. Are there any comments from members of council tonight? Hearing, seeing none, are there any comments?
ERC was canceled for Friday and Eric was going to have a discussion on changing dates.
Okay. Thank you very much. No comments from members of council? Are there any comments from anybody in the administration tonight? Okay, here's seen on, any comments from members of the public? All right, any comments from the news media? I don't think there's anybody from the news media here, but bless and be safe. All right, hearing, seeing none, is there a motion in a second for adjournment?
So moved.
All those in favor? Thank you very much. Have a good evening, everyone. We are adjourned.